And I would not be offended by any means, but as I also told Brian and the mayor, that person, or any probably individual, this general person, wanted $25 an hour. So if council can come up with that, I am more than willing to hand that off.
Well, there's key things in county principles that...
We do our best, and we work diligently every day to do those...
But this separation of those positions is always a key principle in accounting.
And we're never going to pass an audit with me doing all these positions here.
That's always been a recommendation with the audits, at least the ones I've seen since I've been in council, that separation of the two positions is always a recommendation of our audit. So that's where we strive to say, to separate those positions. And actually having a person there to record transactions accurately and on a timely basis and reconcile them would help us.
And we can do our best.
But helping me out also means that there might be other city services that, you know, suffer because of that, too. So I don't want to get thrown it all on just the auditor. Yeah, council may want to revisit some of the deficiencies that were noted in the audit report and just take a look at those and see, you know, what strategy that you want to come up with as far as moving forward for it. Again, back to that letter, you know, if you're going to engage the state to come in and do your audit, we're okay with that. And as a matter of fact, I thought that they would reach out to us and contact us on getting started in the process. Just time is kind of running out for everyone to get the audit done.
So once the state audit is completed, this is just basically, like, if we want you guys to come back, you will? This is kind of just so we won't get double charged from...
That's exactly why I did it. I didn't think it was worth the effort.
I just want to make that clear to everyone, because there are some misconceptions as to why that letter was generated by your company.
Right, and I was trying to save you money.
Yes, correct, thank you. We appreciate that.
Because if they're going to do the work, you know, and then you're going to engage us, they might as well just complete it all.
Okay. Thank you.
But your firm will continue on with us after this?
Yeah, we...
Right, after the state's...
I believe this last year was the last year of our contract. So, yeah, if you're going to re-bid it out or do whatever, we would certainly entertain it and give you a proposal for it. Do you know, Don, is it our last year? I think it is.
I thought we had this year and next.
Okay, I don't remember.
Yeah, I'd have to look at it.
Certainly, if we're under contract, we would honor the contract that we gave you.
I believe we incorporated that in the packet, so...
You'll notice that the state's engagement letter that they sent to you is almost identical to ours, so...
Right.
Except for the cost.
Except for the cost, is that right?
In your opinion, just for transparency purposes, do you believe that contracting with a state auditor and they expose areas that need improvement, do they mandate those things automatically be done, or is it still up to management inside the city to enact? Same rationale. So you're engaging them as auditors, as independent auditors, the fact that they work for the state, they're going to issue the same report, and the same thing is going to go into treasury. Their boss will oversee that, and whatever actions they deem necessary, you'll get a response back, same as with our audit. So there's really not a lot of difference as far as their process for that audit. As outlined in the engagement letter, you know, you see their responsibility, your responsibility. As I said, it's almost identical to ours. So they have a reporting requirement, unfortunately, or maybe fortunately, to their boss, to the individuals that will do your audit, but same thing, same report.
Then doing it, I'm going to be sure you're more action than your private firm doing it for us, and we try to...
Not, as long as there's nothing, you know, different as far as findings or anything wrong.
Anything else to make questions?
Thank you. Feel free to call me if you have any other questions.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
Our next presentation, Lisa from Area Agency on Aging, Region 7. Thank you for allowing me to give a brief presentation of all Region 7 services. I believe I was here about a year ago, and some of you are familiar that were here for that meeting. Sue Gittens was supposed to present tonight, but she was unable to, so I'm filling in. So in your packet, I gave you each a blue folder, and there's a copy of my presentation in there, along with some brochures about our services and some general information. So the reason I'm here is we are, we are on an advocacy push for our agency. And we are going to the city council meetings, and we've also gone to a lot of the Rotary Clubs, Lions Clubs, some of the community organizations within our 10-county area that we serve, just to get the word out about Region 7 and get some referrals for our services. So we are an area agency on aging. We are a nonprofit organization, and we're funded, we were approved under the Older Americans Act of 1965. And each state is divided into planning and service areas. And our planning and service area are 10 counties. So those 10 counties are Huron, Sanolak, Tuscola, Bay, Saginaw Midlands, Granchit, Isabella, Flagger, and Gladland. And across Michigan, there are 16 AAAs, what we call them, our Area Agency on Aging. So we partner with the local organizations, and in your area, it's the Bay County Department on Aging for services to older adults. So through our funding source, which is the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services, they have an adult services agency that gives us the funding. So we get state and federal funds, and they contract with us because we're more efficient with our administrative dollars for them, for us to do it versus them. So in Bay County, we have two main funding sources. And one of them is the MI Choice OMA Community-Based Waiver Program. And that's our largest program, and it serves older adults and persons with disabilities, and it helps them remain independent in their home of choice. So if they want to live in their own home, or in a family member's home, or in an assisted living, then we provide the services for them to do that. These people have to be, have to meet the nursing home level of care. So there's different criteria that they have to meet for this program. So right now, there's approximately 950 participants that are on the program throughout all our 10 counties. And we employ the nurses and social workers that go out into the home to assess the needs of those participants. So once those needs are assessed, then a service plan is developed, and then we contract with agencies within our 10 counties to provide those services within the home. So the second major program that we're talking about is through the Adult Aging and Adult Services on Aging program. And we get state and federal dollars for various programs under that agency. So for instance, we provide Care Management, which is a program to locate and arrange for in-home services for adults 60 and older. We have nutrition programs, like the home-delivered meals and the congregate meal sites. In-home programs such as case coordination support, personal care and homemaking, adult daycare, caregiver training, legal assistance, elder abuse, and our home busman services provided in all 10 counties. We also have health and wellness programs. Transportation services in collaboration with the local county transit. We have a Medicare Medicaid Assistance Program, which helps people, helps them decide which insurance plan is best for them. And that's going on right now. We have an open enrollment period, which started October 15th, and it goes through December 7th. And we have people that are, that are trained to assist people that come into our building that need help with choosing an insurance plan. We have an Information and Assistance Program, which are trained staff to help people connect to services. So if you were to call our agency and say you may need help for a family member or a neighbor, then an INA specialist could help you determine which services could be provided, which agencies within your county could help you. So those are the people that have all the information. And then we also have a Senior Community Services Employment Program, which is for people that are 55 and older, and they want to get back in the workforce and maybe get a full-time job. We provide the training for them in a nonprofit organization. So we place them out in the community, and they'll get the job skills that they would need to get a full-time job. So in summary, each county that we have under our service area pays dues every year, and that helps offset the cost of the county commissioner that sits on our board. So in 2018, which is the most recent year that we have audited, Bay County paid $6,539 in dues. But in return, the county as a whole, which means all the providers that receive funds, receives over $6,700,000 to provide services within Bay County. So 4,438 residents of Bay County were served in 2018 under all of our programs. 1,197 people were served under the Medicaid Waiver Program as a whole, and 308 residents were Bay County residents. Does anybody have any questions? So in your, like I said, in your folder, there's some general information, there's some brochures. If anybody has any questions later on, as they're going for the, going through the packet, I have my business card there. You can call me. Or the best person to call is an Information and Assistance Specialist, and tell them where you heard about us, that I was at the presentation, and they would be the ones to talk to you. I can leave a few business cards here if anybody in the audience wants to call.
Yeah, put them on the back table, that'd be great, thanks.
That would be great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on. Approval of the consent agenda. I just may be edited or deleted.
I would like to remove or edit item C, or item B. The September 16 minutes, one motion on unfinished business is incorrect.
So you're going to make a motion on item B?
Yeah, to remove the September 16, 2019, formal city council meeting minutes, and to present an amendment to a motion that was recorded by the Turk as being inaccurate. The motion was, which is in our minutes, our first draft didn't include the motion, and then our second draft we received included this motion. It was a motion regarding, a motion for a moratorium to cove down all city-owned websites until the city manager has gained password to the sites and access to the Pink County Police Department Facebook page and the DDA-owned web and Facebook page. All in favor, motion carried. Motion by Sherry and Ann was that presented that motion. That motion, a moratorium, was after a request of the city manager, after the social media policy was passed, she asked for a moratorium on social media postings, not websites, at the city manager's request to provide only authorization to stop all social media posts, postings per the city manager's request, providing only authorizations by the city manager to have a moratorium on posts until the point where she had gained control of access and administrative authority for the city-owned sites, and those being the Pink County Police Department Facebook page and the DDA-owned site Facebook page. That was the motion. So I'm going to note those corrections and...
So you're making a motion to remove it, or I had it fixed?
Remove the, remove what's in there.
Remove, right.
And the motion was by Sherry and Ann, and that was to be a moratorium on social media postings per the city manager's request, provided authorization to stop all posts until the city manager has gained access and administrative authority for the city-owned sites, the Pink County Police Department Facebook page and the DDA's owned Facebook page. That was the motion.
Now you're making a motion to add or remove it.
And replace with this the correct motion.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get, because instead of me peeing off, the show.
We didn't, we didn't have a, we didn't have, that motion wasn't to cove down sites. It was to have a moratorium on postings until the city manager has gained control.
Sherry, Lucy, and Ann need one. I believe I gave you one. That's just stating that per direction of council, the social media site, which is incorrect, that was per our city manager's request. So we need to change those minutes, because they're incorrect. I'm not approving anything incorrect anymore. That it was the request of the manager.
Well, if you want me to read the motion again?
Well, could you just, I mean, but you're going to need support from somebody, and then we'll...
Motion again, my motion is to correct the, the minutes of September 16th.
Yep. I'll support.
I want to read it again first. To remove the, what's in the draft, motion supported made by Sherry and supported by Ann, motion for moratorium to cove down all city-owned websites.
So you're basically just to remove the closed down?
Well, it's still a little bit inaccurate, the whole motion. So what we want to do is to delete that and to add this. The motion was moratorium on social media postings, further requested the city manager to provide authorization to stop all posts until the city manager has gained access and administrative authority for the city-owned sites, those being the Pink County Police Department Facebook page and the DDA's owned site, Facebook site page. That was the motion that we voted on and passed, all in favor. So that was my motion to correct the minutes per second part.
I'll support, correct, make the correction. So we have a motion and a support to make the corrections on the September 16 meeting, Department of City Council.
I thought Becky already supported.
I think she hadn't finished that.
No.
No, that's fine.
You're good.
All in favor? Or do you want a roll call vote?
There should be discussion first.
And discussion. Yeah, that's right. I don't know if that's what you want to do. So what's your thoughts?
Well, I understand what you're saying. And so the sites are shut down, Don, is that...
There have been no postings since the September...
Well, no. Pink County Police Department page is, is gone. It got taken over by the Friends of Pink County Police Department, got renamed two days after you posted the last post on, on the Pink County Police Department's page. That Friday, and on Sunday, it opened up under a new name. And under Facebook Transparency, it said it was just renamed by the administrator. Who's the administrator?
No.
Okay. But it's a city-owned site.
With the name change.
If you look at that, Friends of Pink County Facebook page right on.
This is all outside of my expertise.
I understand, but...
You are the one that requested the moratorium?
Right.
Correct, oh, yeah. You never took control of this site. It seems to, at least in my opinion, you just gave permission to let a name change happen, which then transferred over all the members of that Pink County Police Department group, which should have had the moratorium on the face.
Okay, so we're looking at wording, because basically I said, no more postings. So there was, it should have said moratorium instead of closed. It didn't say permanently closed. It just said that it was closed. I mean, there, we can debate all day long as to how you want to interpret it.
But this side, then, it was going to be changed. Should have just been made a new Facebook page. Fine, everybody has their right to a public Facebook page. But as our city manager, you were supposed to, per your request, I mean, you remember that, correct? You were there. Okay, per your request for the moratorium, what you asked us to do was until you could take control of DDA and Pink County Police Department Facebook page, which you did not.
I suspended postings.
No, I don't believe you did, because I think at 10 o'clock that night, after our meeting, there was a post. And then a couple days later was, welcome to the new Facebook page. But didn't you need time? You had said you needed time to get passwords and things in order.
Right, that, that was the motion to allow for getting access codes, access rights to these sites. I'm 100% agreement with that. You would be in control, you're our funnel to say, why did this happen? You know, other than employees posting on there, the social media policy pretty much spells out what needs to be done. But what we're talking about right here, right now, is correcting that motion.
The minutes. That's fine. So I don't believe you need a roll call vote. So if there's no more discussion, that's up to you, isn't it?
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We will get that corrected.
So Mayor from town?
Yes.
Do you still need a motion?
To approve.
For the consent agenda, would that change?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda, with the change in the minutes, reporting on the moratorium motion for the September 16 meeting.
No support.
So we have a motion and support to change, with the change in the September 16 meetings with the moratorium.
Moratorium.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Committee reports, city manager, Don Hatter.
Okay, so you have a short report from me for this. I shared with you in that report that I, the day after the last special meeting on October 1st, that I placed the call to the state in regards to the audit and emergency manager. Your packet, we, has the response I received from the state on the audit. I have not received a response yet on the emergency manager part. I updated you that the saw grant continues, that we've had an issue over at the plant. The gentlemen are there, we have hot painting that are there to do the painting. So what the painting is, is inside of the circular foundations at the plant. You have three of them out there. The inner circle is called the clarifier, the outer is called the ditch. We have to drain both sections, so the clarifier was drained so that they could sandblast and paint the crosswalk there and some other components that are inside the clarifier. Then when they moved to do the outside, the ditch, they ran into an issue in that since inception of that wastewater plant, those ditches have never been taken offline and cleaned. So we had a good four to five feet of sludge. And sludge means what you think it means, okay? The painters could not get in there to do that painting with that material there. Our guys did their very best. They were not able to get that pushed back, so we did have to call a dependable in and have that removed. Now, they did not remove, now that ditch is huge. It's, the circumference of that is huge. So there was no way that we could afford to do the whole cleaning. So what they did is in two sections underneath each crosswalk, and the motors to churn that water was to push that back about four or five feet, just enough so that the painters can get in there to clean. As I said in my report, Gary Bartow and Ken Miller were here on the 15th to meet with me. We worked out a way to get that covered under that saw grant. Because with anything, as things happen, there's always issues that arise that you do not foresee. I updated you that water bills have been mailed out, collection's underway. We've done the main collection now, we're into the penalty phase. I wanted to update you that late last week, I don't know if it was late Thursday or Friday, we were notified that Captain Spencer will be off for the next six months. We have brought our Officer Viviano on full-time, who was willing to do that. A letter was sent out to our past Chief Topper, who was on layoff. I do not have a phone number for him, so it had to be done by letter forms to see if he was coming back. If not, we also have two other individuals that wouldn't mind coming on part, in a temporary part time to do that staffing.
So he is still actually on layoff, correct?
Chief?
Yes.
Yep, and then your tape in front of you tonight, I was just notified today by both the Rotary and the Saginaw Bay Land Conservatory, that there will be a ribbon cutting for the nature park that they put in, and that is going to be October 31st at 1:30. And if you could please let me know, they are asking for us to RSVP if we are going to have members there. I will not be able to attend.
Is it the 31st now?
Yes. I will not be able to attend, as that is the day St. Mike's Cathedral prayed, and we had already let them know that we would be willing to have them come through and handle things, so...
Just a question, Tom, too, about, excuse me, about, did the youth league ever step off where they're building youth provoking with you?
Yes.
Okay, so everything's good with you?
Yep. Because one...
I know they started on our...
Yeah, actually...
Kevin?
Kevin, thank you. Texted me today that they were getting started and that they were at Seaclans ordering supplies. So, but yes, before Trevor and them with the Saginaw Bay Land Conservatory came, I identified that, you know, we had already been in talks with the ball league and where they were going to place their stuff. So that was all taken into consideration beforehand.
Do you know why they ripped down on it?